President.
Counselor Gerson.
President.
Coleman. Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Gorley. Here. Counselor Trask. Counselor Richards. And Counselor Sanchez.
Counselor Sanchez, the system should be allowing you to.
I am here, Kim.
Thank you.
I apologize. Counselor Sanchez is here. Thank you.
Second. Counselor Gorley. Counselor Trask. Counselor Richards. Mayor Mahler. Counselor Gerson. Counselor Sanchez.
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, could we clarify that that motion was to excuse her from both this meeting and the work session earlier tonight?
My apologies, yeah. Let's go ahead and show the work session and.
I guess Counselor Trask going to amend his motion to clarify.
Yes, I admit that too.
Thank you.
Session one two.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, that's the mayor's fault. Well, you go ahead and do the online and notification, please.
We'll give everyone a few minutes now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask in the interest of time that people not repeat a previous speaker, instead state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson for the council rules. Those joining by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor slash chairperson. The fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Thank you, LaJia. Before we move on, I'm going to make a notification that will be amending the agenda this evening, adding a new item to the business of the Resolution Number 21 for 2021. Resolution establishing salary schedules for non-represented employees. So duly noted. Next up, send agenda. Show move.
I'll second that.
Oh, second by roll call, please.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes?
Counselor Gorley. Counselor Trask.
Yeah, aye.
Counselor Gerson.
Aye.
Mayor Mahler.
Aye. For the show of six eyes, no need, we're both consent. Moving on to recognition, vision, and hearing petition. Anybody who might come forth to call out, refer others in the office.
This begins on page nine of your packet. I'm going to turn this over to Chief Lynn and let him explain that to you.
Yes, counsel, thank you. The Downtown Lounge is expanding their service during, to include an outdoor venue during the Oregon Jamboree this upcoming weekend. As part of the outdoor venue, a public address permit has been requested basically to allow the event to play amplified music outdoors. Similar to what has been approved in the past, in 2019, the last jamboree that took place, the Downtown Restaurant Lounge had a similar event. And they are requesting, in essence, the same thing. And I know Katie Julian, the owner, is here to address counsel and offer some explanations. Now, they also wanted, there was somewhat of a mix-up, and they're also requesting Thursday, a public address permit for Thursday as well, in addition to the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday that has been included in this packet. So I'm not sure if you want further detail on that. In previous years, as in 2019, this came before counsel because of the level of noise that is planned to be played. If it's over a thousand feet, the volume can be heard past that, then based on our ordinance, it has to come before counsel for approval. If it's less than that, then I myself can approve those. So that's why it's before counsel. In 2019, counsel had reviewed a similar request. I've looked at our records back in 2019, and I found no citizens' complaints associated with the noise at the venue during that year. And so I'd be happy to answer any more questions, and I'm sure Ms. Julian will also be willing to answer questions for you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, is the Thursday night going to extend into 1:00 a.m.?
That I would defer to Ms. Julian, but I do not believe so. Would you want to go? Yeah, please.
Yeah, and I'll need your name and address for the record.
It's Catherine Julian, 42460 Upper Berlin Drive, Lebanon, Oregon, 97355. To answer your question, it'll just be midnight like it was in 2019.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a note from my younger years, many, many years ago, my parents told me nothing can happen good at midnight.
Any other further questions?
I don't see any reason to not approve this. I'm just saying that now. And I heard the best things happen.
I won't go there, Counselor. Anyway, any further questions?
I do have one more question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So I noticed on the permit for OLCC is not signed, that at least the copy you've given us is not signed by OLCC. Has it been approved?
It has.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further questions?
Can I say one more thing? Sunday is people getting ready for work on Monday morning. I am a little concerned about a really late night on Sunday. That's just a personal thing on my part. Nobody's complained about it in the past. I guess it's just me, so.
Just play metal music. Any further questions? Thank you. Is this a request for council action? Because it's not listed as such.
It is, and I see. We are asking for a motion from the county.
I need a request for council action regarding this application.
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes?
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. On the record show of six eyes, no need approval of the application.
And just for my clarification, that includes Thursday from eight to midnight as well, correct? Okay, thank you.
Next up, request to review and amend the city code pertaining to bees and beekeeping.
This begins on page 16 of your packet. Staff was contacted about two weeks ago when a member of our community received a notice from our code enforcement officer that they were violating our beekeeping ordinance. The community member is present and would, I believe, like to address counsel and share their thoughts. And I believe they've got some information to share with you as well, which is also in your packet. With that, Blair, are we missing anything in there?
Just to provide some current context, our current rules for bees are there, the code states there must be one quarter of an acre that is exclusively set aside for each hive of bees, and the overall location at which the bees are residing has at minimum one half of an acre, and the hives must be kept at least 50 feet from property lines and not opened towards neighboring properties. So that's the current state of our code, and I believe Mr. Bronson is proposing different regulations. I think there may be some others besides Mr. Bronson here to speak as well.
Okay. Welcome. Name and address for record, please.
My name is Kim Bronson. Reside in Foster, 6313 Lake Point Way, Lake Point. Anything else we need to?
No, just need an address.
My friend, so be speaking as well.
Okay.
As a record, in case we were cited for a violation of city code 06.04.024. Frankly, we didn't even know there was such a code for bees here in Sweet Home, and upon looking at it and seeing that, well, yeah, we're definitely in violation. We have one-third of an acre. We're right on the city county line, our backyard is. If I moved it across the line to the neighbors, we'd be in compliance. But that's not what we intend to do, to feel that the code needs to be updated to what's going on today. We are also gardeners, and it's, I won't speak on the port of bees on that as pollinators. I did want to speak on this particular code. You've seen it in your packet, you've read it, but there's also three other codes in there from other cities. I believe that the existing code is primarily based on fear, not on the actions of honeybees, because we're talking about honeybees, not hornets, not yellow jackets, but honeybees. And I'm around them every day, and I mean, I just walk around them. It's not a problem at all. Stir them up, so. So rather than complaining about it, I'd like to do something about it and just update it. So there's a copy in your packet of a proposed updated code used as a guidance. And that's the main message I wanted to bring tonight was, let's update it and make it so it's usable, because as it's written now, with those large amount of land that's required, and the fact you can't have bees, hives adjacent to another, which is not the way you keep bees, it's not real practical for 99% of residents of Sweet. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So you're saying a minimum of 10 feet from any property line, unless there is a fence, right?
Correct.
If there is a fence, are you saying that the hives can be right next to the fence, that there is no?
What I'm saying, in fact, I updated it. I said what we wrote out this morning, within two feet of the fence. If the fence is six foot or higher, or the hedge or barrier is six foot or higher. Because bees don't just randomly fly out, you know, honeybees, they use a flyway, and they need a path of, you know, 10, 12 feet, you know, in front of them if going. And if that is a line parallel to property line, it works quite well. It's a good place to put them. Last year, when we lived on 40th Avenue over here, which I lived for 10 years, so we moved out to Foster in November, I had two hives over there, and the neighbors loved it because the fruit trees and gardens were so productive. I didn't know there was an ordinance right there, but I literally had it two foot away from my neighbor's fence, so we could walk around the hives, and both of them faced east. It worked really well for us. We didn't know we were violating the law at that time.
Mr. Mayor, I have no problem with this myself, but I do think that five hives is too many. I would go for three. That's my recommendation, that we go for three hives.
One question, just for clarification. You said you were cited.
Well, we didn't get a piece of paper that said that, you know, a code enforcement officer did come to our house and to our door and said you're in violation of the code. You, these are too close to, well, you didn't say exactly how, but property line.
Warning, then?
What?
It was basically like a warning. I, because I was, I had the impression you had been cited and fined.
Well, we were, we have to remove the bee.
It was just a clarification. No, it was clarification, is what we're asking.
Told, I look at that, if, you know, we have to take an action, and.
Was there an event is why they were coming to you?
What's that?
Was there an event, a reason why they came to you on this code?
Too close to the line.
Mr. Mayor, there was a complaint.
That's.
Yeah, we received the complaint.
Assuming, because, because we don't know who or how, but I had a conversation by text with one of our neighbors in the past, and it was about how close the hives were to the line, and there was no, we just moved there, so I built a fence in there. They're all enclosed in the backyard with a six-foot fence with only access through gates that can only be reached of the inside. So we did what we can to, you know, make it safe as possible in the neighborhood, and there's a number of boys who go through there, you know, eight, 10 years old, and you can go through our front yard, which they do now. Kids being good neighbors about the whole thing. But that was someone who lives in the county, not in the city.
Can you advise me as to what that complaint was?
Ray, can we, like, are complaints public as soon as someone?
Yes.
Because I would like to see what the complaint was also.
So. I don't think you're going to get anything out of the complaint that's useful, other than they're violating the code.
It wasn't like a rip, like someone did not write a letter to the city saying that they wanted this.
It depends. We take complaints in a variety of ways. One of those ways is through the website, where people can enter in a complaint, and there's a, there's a point there where they could check a box that indicates whether they want to remain anonymous. But there's other complaints that come in by phone or otherwise, or even in person.
I was just curious that we knew what the complaint was.
In this case, it was a complaint that the, that there were bees, that it was in violation of the city's code on bees, and that they were too close to the property line. And so we take those complaints and act on them. Typically, as I believe happened in this case, the code enforcement officer first gives a warning and educates the folks about the code that they're in violation, because as with many, sometimes people are completely unaware that there is an ordinance against it, and then gives a period of time to cure that situation. And so I believe we're still in that period. I don't know exactly what he told you, but that's our typical way of operating. But it's also, I agree, a good time to revisit the code and see whether it's.
I mean, the way the code is now, it's pretty out of date, so I think that we should just scrap it. I mean, just find something new. Like, I think Lebanon had in there that it was where you could have, like, 100 feet within a beehive or another beehive or something like that, and you can't have any complaints. We could amend it and do something like that.
Okay, do we have any further questions of these folks?
I, I would like to.
Go ahead. Counselor Sanchez, go ahead.
Mayor, if I may, thank you. So the 6.04.020 just says honeybees. And then on the proposed revision, it excludes any use except for personal. Is there a reason for that? Are we not allowed to also have honeybees for sale, the honey or anything like that? Can we just keep L, just saying honeybees, just like the original, and get, do away with the, for only personal use?
So our current code does not specify whether it's personal use or anything like that. What we would, in residential areas, we would assume that it's for personal use and not for commercial use. But we don't have any way of really tracking that, or we don't, frankly, it's not something that we typically look at. Mr. Bronson's proposed ordinance does have a personal use provision. Ultimately, I'm not sure that we would really need one specifying personal use or not. Let's.
Yeah, that's where I'm coming from. That's my thing.
Okay. Go ahead.
We just put this proposal together as a base to start with. You know, we find, like, this one says that bees be, that needs to be taken out there. Basically, they don't have honey, they don't sting, and they don't. So there's a few little things that, but it's a starting point to update, what we're trying to accomplish here is update the city code so it's usable with today's needs and residents.
So I, to remind counsel, basically, tonight, even though it's not ordered according to request review, it's really an RCA request for council action. And basically, the option here is do nothing, direct staff to work on an ordinance, or direct staff to research other options. So we're not looking for a decision on the wording of this tonight. It's more of, if you feel this needs to be completely redone, then you'd be looking at option two. Okay, for the most part.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, how many bees, hives do we have?
Four. Well, we had, we have moved, yeah, there is, over half of the way.
So what would be your number?
Four.
So.
We could be up to five. We put five.
Yes, I, yeah.
Five is, we picked that number because if you have five or more hives, you must have a license to be, in the state of Oregon, to be a beekeeper. So if five, you got a license, if you have four, then you don't.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this either, but I might go with a three number just for me, but we'll, we'll work on it and come up with something.
Other questions of these folks? Okay, thank you.
Can I talk?
We got, we got other people in the back, too.
I'll be brief.
Five or more beekeepers.
Okay, my name is Fran Bronson, and I live at 6313 Lake Point Way, Foster, Oregon. Before moving to Sweet Home in this area, I was living in West Salem, and I was a beekeeper with the Mid Valley Beekeepers Association. I had a mentor, Fred Venada, who had been keeping bees since he was 10 years old, and he just recently passed away at like 98. But he and I were talking one day, and we thought it'd be really cool if we approached the governor's office to put beehives at the governor's office. So I approached Governor Kitzkopf, and we talked about it, and we went through risk management, which is the state insurance carrier for the state, to make sure that it was going to be appropriate and that they would feel comfortable. And they came back with two recommendations. One is that they would have the beehives 10 feet away from the next person, from the fence that segregated Mahonia Hall from a private residence, and that they would put up signs that said, "Caution: Active Beehive." Now, this was done in the back of Mahonia Hall and in the backyard, and they've had numerous functions back there, and nobody's been stung. And so I find the current ordinance to be rather weird because there, it's saying that one-fourth of an acre is needed per hive. Bees travel six miles radius from their hive. There's no way you can contain them. They're going to go where the food is. And we could have bees come to our place that are from different areas. So that kind of struck me as being odd, having like a small area or a large area where there might be no foliage or food, and the bees would just leave. In West Salem, I had two beehives in my backyard. I had no problem with the neighbors and no problems with anybody with them. And the one thing that I did want to end with is that Fred said that the fact that there's a colony of bees behind the White House, behind the governor's house, helps educate people that they aren't dangerous, and they are not. The only time they're going to be dangerous is if you go over there and beat their hive with a stick, or you knock them over, but we work with them all the time. So if you have any questions, I'd be.
That's my understanding. They're not aggressive, so. Can I ask, in one of these ordinances, it has in there where, paraphrasing it, they're worried about people with allergy, or not allergies, but. Allergic reaction, yeah. Right, allergic. Should that be, according to you, should that be in here?
No, because a bee, you can't control them. They're going to go, if somebody's out playing in a field and they get stung, you don't know where that bee came from. And it's, it's like, and we live like on the edge of the county, and we have those boys, we told the boys, and they were coming through, that there were bees back there, and they had to be careful and to go through the front yard. And they would come over and look at the bees, we'd talk about it, and they're very respectful of the bees, and we haven't had any problems with that.
Isn't it, you know, I don't know, but isn't it true that a honeybee is, I won't say a good word for it, potent is like a yellow jacket or a wasp. I think when you're talking about allergic reaction, you're talking about the nasty bee. I call them nasty bees, the wasp, the.
Nasty insects.
And stuff like that. Versus a honeybee, you get stung, yeah, it smarts, but you don't.
I don't know about that.
allergic reactions much.
They don't eat meat like a. No, they don't. Does.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
I think I've learned more about bees tonight than I.
Any other questions?
No, thank you for your input.
Well, thank. So, Mr. Mayor, I think we should have staff, I would like us to direct staff to develop an ordinance that is more up to date for this issue.
One second. We have folks here still.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We come forth, name and address for testimony. I, that's why I knew we had more folks here for Minnesota.
All right.
That's fine.
Hi, my name's Don Herbison, Storybook Farm. My address is 27976 Meridian Heights in Sweet Home.
Welcome.
I'm a master beekeeper. Right now, I run about 15, 16 hives. In the city limits, I have 15 clients that have hives that I take care of for. None of them has more than a half acre, including their house. So according to your ordinance, they're all illegal.
Oh.
Including a former city councilman.
Let's hunt them down.
They're going to thank you.
I own a piece of property off of 42nd and 0 Sage, that Olson Beehive Beekeeper Company. That Olson Beehive Beekeeper Company used to bring as many as fifty hives on that property until last year. When I asked them not to go there, because that's where my, I put some of my bees. And they didn't have the legal rights to go on to the property. So they now don't go on to it. But they bring, they're a commercial beekeeper and they bring as many as fifty, sixty hives onto that property. And they're on pallets, four hives to a regular pallet. So there's a lot of bees there. Down on Port Drive behind me, a guy has over a thousand hives. So when you're talking about bees traveling, they're coming into the city from outside the county. Now, my people, we, we instruct them, I give beekeeping classes up at the house. If anybody ever wants to learn anything about bees, I'll be more glad to put on a beekeeping class for you. I also catch swarms. So if you get complaints about swarms, we had three swarms out off of, um, over by the Elk's Lodge this year. And I heard you got complaints about them.
Three swarms?
Three swarms. Are you familiar what a swarm is?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I know what it is.
And, uh, I caught one and friends of mine caught two of them. But that's a natural habit for them. So.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but on a side note, does our code enforcement guy not have anything better to do than?
His, his job is not to legislate, it's to adjudicate.
To drive through town and see a lot of other things that need code enforcement.
Yeah. We, you got citizens, if you have a code complaint.
Correct.
His job is.
He has to respond.
He has to respond. It's like, I'll, I'll jump in, let's say, police officer. If we had a complaint to the police department, he said, we're not going to go out.
I have no problem with the gentleman doing his job, going out and say, hey.
Yeah.
These bees needs to be moved.
They're doing the same.
Complaint is, how can you expect anybody in the city limits to have a beehive? If you say they gotta have at least a quarter of an acre just for their bee? Not including the house. And how many houses are in the city limits? There are lots over a quarter of an acre. So your ordinance is kind of outdated?
I think we've came to, I think we've came to a conclusion or consensus.
I think we've gone back.
We need to redo it.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I think we've gone back and brought the, the, the ordinance definitely has to be redone, but I mean, I think that we've chatted a lot about it tonight and we'll definitely get that going.
Thank you.
Anything for, you wanted to add something, sir?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
I am Richard Murrell. I live at three, two, zero, nine, Zalkova. And that is a beautiful pit that you're going to develop soon.
Okay.
And I'm a volunteer instructor for the Extinction Service. I'm a specialist in native bee. I'm carrying a margin in my career and dealt with the ordinance for the superposition. I think the ordinance was definitely out of date, that we all seem to agree. That being the case, I would like to offer myself to work with whoever you may appoint to review this and come up with a more realistic ordinance, because this is not biologically fixed. It's way out of date.
I would, I would recommend that anybody within the citizens of the city, you gentlemen with your expertise, I, I would say come before the, the city here and give your feedback to them and share your expertise with them. Um, obviously we are going to be moving this forward for a change, okay? So I recommend you come to the city and give your expertise to them. So as they develop something new for the city for us to review, it makes more sense.
My pleasure.
I'll be glad to work with them too.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Gentlemen, if you could just make sure your phone numbers, did they sign with their phone numbers? Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to come forth to talk about bees? Just to act the, yeah, the ability. Okay, at this time, unless there's any further question, I need a council directive regarding this.
Um, I, I, would I make a motion to choose options two?
Yes, fair.
Um, I'll make a motion for option number two.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards? Mayor Mahler?
Aye.
Counselor Gerson?
Aye.
The motion, six ayes, none nays, move forward with the new ordinance being amended, option two. Um, next up, a request for council action, resolution number twenty, for twenty twenty-one, resolution adopting a supplemental budget for gas, a state gas tax fund.
This begins on page thirty of your packet and I'll turn it over to Brandon.
Thank you, counsel. Um, we, in twenty twenty, January twenty twenty, uh, we had one position, uh, in our streets fund, um, our streets crew that was vacated as a employee, uh, was, was moved into the maintenance mechanic role. Um, at that time, we opted to leave that position vacant for a period of time. And the, the logic behind that was with COVID onsetting, uh, we wanted to make sure the, and, and the information we had from the state, uh, at the time, we wanted to make sure that we would have enough money in that fund to continue to move forward with what we were planning, um, without having a, a four-person staff and no operations. Um, with that being said, uh, we've gone through two budget cycles now. Um, this was to be the second one with, uh, that street crew being down one full FTE. We had done it again this year to kind of rebuild the fund balance in that fund and prepare for, you know, our future. Uh, however, in the middle of July, we received a check from the state of Oregon for a hundred forty thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars. That check made up for the, the variance that we saw between what we had anticipated in state gas tax funds and what actually transpired, um, in, in gas tax funds, because people just weren't driving during, during the COVID time. So with that being said, we are requesting a supplemental budget to restore that FTE that we took away about a year and a half ago, um, to bring this, the streets crew back to its full, um, operational capacity.
Any questions, counsel? If not, council directive.
So moved is recommended.
I second that.
Motion is second, all by roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Aye.
Counselor Gerson?
Aye.
Counselor Trask?
Aye.
Counselor Gorley?
Aye.
At the record show, six ayes, none nays, with one absent approval, uh, resolution of twenty for twenty twenty-one. Next up will be, uh, res, a request for council action, resolution number twenty-one for twenty twenty-one. Resolution establishes salary schedules for non-represented employees for amendment.
This kind of goes back to the discussion we had, um, at the work session a little bit. Uh, again, staff has worked really hard to, um, build trust, um, uh, with, with our, our employees, uh, management team. Uh, and what we've run into is just a very simple little oversight that we've discovered here as we've been working on payroll for this, this month. When we negotiated the contract with AFSMI, uh, the contract was set so that their CPI salary increases will be based on a calendar year. So January one through December thirty-first. When we set the non-represented staff, we've set it based, unintentionally, set it based on the budget year. So July one through June thirty. Nobody had any idea at that time about COVID, um, any of those kinds of things. What has happened is the last few months, inflation has been extremely high. And so when you take the non-represented staff and you go by the budget year, that number works out to five point four or five percent increase because it includes the past couple of months, which have been 10% or higher. The unions ca- um, contract, again, running on the calendar year, works out to one point two, three percent. Now, in their contract, they do have a floor, which means they could not get less than one point two, five percent. Um, so what staff is doing in an interest, uh, in the interest of trying to be fair and equitable with our employees is ask that non-represented staff's CPI or coal raises be computed the same as the, as the AFSMI staff. Um, or some other equitable measure. Uh, we don't want our employees that, again, we value and cherish and that have worked really hard for us over the, the past few years especially, we believe, um, feeling that they're getting slighted in any way. Um, so we've presented a couple of different options for you to look at. Um, that's the gist of it. Uh, if you have questions or I can turn it over to Brandon and Blair, they've been working on this. Uh, and maybe they can also share some details.
I don't, I don't know that we really have anything to add. Um, we did a nice job summing that up for us. Um, but certainly we can answer questions if the council has any.
At this time, I'll open up any questions for counsel.
So this ties them in to no more, no less, just equal.
Correct.
Okay.
If option number two is chosen.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, council directive. Council directive.
Mr. Mayor, so moved is recommended.
I'll second that.
A motion is second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Aye.
At the record show, I have six ayes, none nays, with one absent approval, the resolution number twenty-one for twenty twenty-one. Um, at this time, we will go ahead and we're moving down to ordinance bills. We're going to go ahead and open up for, um, a public hearing for zone map amendment application, ZMA twenty-one dash zero-two. At this time, I will go ahead and it's at seven fifteen, I'll open up the public hearing. I will read the hearing, uh, disclosure statement. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue and with enough detail for the city council and parties of an opportunity to respond to the issues later that they want to raise that issue and then on an appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria. If you have any questions, please wait until appropriate time, then direct your questions to the council. Please, please, please speak one at a time for recorder knows who's speaking. At this time, declarations of city council, any personal bias, conflict of interest or any ex parte information. Counselor Gorley.
No.
No, no.
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 At the record show, we have six nos, um, with no personal bias, conflict of interest or any ex parte information. At this time, we'll turn it over for staff report.
Okay, thank you. Um, the applicant in this, uh, for this action is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately twenty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-five square feet. Uh, that's point six, seven acres located at fourteen, eleven, eighteenth Avenue and thirteen fifty-five, nineteenth Avenue in Sweet Home. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the existing commercial highway C two and industrial M zones to the light industrial zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing con- comprehensive plan map designation. The planning, uh, commission held a public hearing, uh, on July twenty-seventh, uh, twenty twenty-one. At the hearing, the planning commission reviewed application ZMA twenty-one zero-two. The planning commission received testimony and deliberated on this matter and passed a motion to recommend approval of the application to the city council. Uh, the motion of approval specified a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the decision motion is mailed and no specific conditions of approval were required. Um, just by way of information, this application was being filed, uh, is being filed simultaneously with applications PLA twenty-one dash thirteen, PLA twenty-one dash fourteen and PLA twenty-one dash fifteen. Those are property line adjustments. Uh, those were all approved with conditions by, uh, the community economic development director on July sixth, twenty twenty-one. So the question before you is whether this, uh, application should be approved or not. And I believe the, uh, applicant is, uh, is present as well.
Okay, at this time, any questions of counselors regarding the application? Okay, at this time, testimony, applicant's testimony, who'd like to come forth? Name and address, sir.
Michael Grove, address thirteen, twenty-five, eighteenth Avenue, um, Sweet Home, Oregon. Current site manager of Sweet Home Sanitation. Oh, testimonial time, sorry. Little new at this. So essentially the goal of this lot line adjustment is adding a second scale to our transfer station. Um, overall achieve, or what we're trying to achieve here is getting customers in and out quickly. Um, alleviating a lot of that backup on eighteenth Avenue. Sure, we've, uh, ran into that once or twice. Um, so essentially, what we need now, because this scale is about eighty-eight feet long from one end to the other, it spans over two lot lines, uh, so until we can complete it, or we cannot complete it until we have that lot line adjusted.
Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you for the testimony.
I feel like I have the boring topic of the night.
It wasn't trashy. That was a bad one. Hey, click along, go, click along, folks. Anyway, got a little humor. Uh, testimony in favor, testimony of those wishing to speak in the favor of the application. So. Okay, testimony in opposition, any testimony wishing to speak in opposition of this application? A neutral testimony, testimony of those that are neither in favor nor in opposition of the application. Any rebuttal? At this time, at seven twenty, we will close the public hearing. Any, any discussion of counsel regarding this?
Mr. Mayor, do we have, we do have a question. So will there be an exit on nineteenth? Or is, is it just going to be in and out?
So the exit will still be on nineteenth. Um, it's a little easier in the commission. So essentially, they'll loop around pulling a lot of that traffic off of eighteenth. They'll enter on one scale, they'll dump and then they'll exit on the second scale and they'll be pointing straight out towards the exit on nineteenth.
So it'll be a loop like this?
Yep, they'll, they'll kind of make a giant loop through the whole place and then straight out on the nineteenth.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Thanks for coming this evening. Now moving this forward, um, I need a council directive to move this forward for first reading, um, of the application.
So I move to approve the application, ZMA two, one, dash, zero.
For first reading.
Yep, for first reading, please.
I will second that.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley?
Aye.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards? Mayor Mahler?
Aye.
Counselor Gerson?
Aye.
Counselor Trask?
At the show, si- six ayes, none nays, one absent, moving this forward to first reading at this time, go ahead and do first reading.
I'll go ahead. Ordinance bill number six for twenty twenty one, ordinance number blank, an ordinance amending the official zoning map. Whereas the applicant Sweet Home Sanitation Service Incorporated submitted zone change application ZMA twenty one dash zero two and requested a zone map change for an area consisting of approximately twenty nine thousand three hundred thirty five square feet, point six seven acres located at fourteen eleven eighteenth Avenue and thirteen fifty five nineteenth Avenue, Sweet Home, Oregon, nine seven three eight six. That's tax lot thirteen S zero one E thirty two DB, tax lots thirty seven zero one, four hundred and eleven hundred. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the commercial highway C two and industrial M zones to the light industrial zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. The subject property is identified on Lynn County Assessor's map as thirteen S zero one E thirty two DB, tax lots three seven zero one, four hundred and eleven hundred. And whereas the planning commission of the city of Sweet Home held a public hearing on July fifteenth, twenty twenty one, with due notice of such public hearing having been given and provided an opportunity for public comments and testimony. The planning commission deliberated at their July fifth, fifteenth, twenty twenty one meeting and recommended that the city council approve this application and whereas the city council held a public hearing on this matter on July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, with due notice of such public hearing to provide opportunity for public comment and testimony. City council approved this application by motion at their July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one meeting and whereas the proposed light industrial zoning is needed to facilitate development of the subject property. Now therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, the city of Sweet Home adopts the findings of fact in support of zone change application ZMA twenty one dash zero two included as exhibit A. Section two, the city of Sweet Home amends the official zoning map identified in, in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point two zero point zero two zero as the city zoning map, including all subsequent amendments for an area consisting of approximately point six seven acres located at fourteen eleven eighteenth Avenue and thirteen fifty five nineteenth Avenue, Sweet Home, Oregon, nine seven three eight six. And identified on the Lynn County Assessor's map as thirteen S zero one E twenty eight DC, tax lots three seven zero one, four hundred and eleven hundred. Official zoning map shall be amended from the commercial highway C two and industrial M zones to the light industrial zone for the subject property as shown on exhibit B. Passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of blank twenty twenty one. Signed, Mayor, attest, city manager, ex officio, city recorder.
Any questions to council? I need a council directive to move this on to second reading.
I move, we move this ordinance to second reading.
I'll second that.
Most second by roll call, please.
Counselor Richards. Mayor Mahler.
Aye.
Counselor Gerson.
Aye.
Counselor Trask.
Aye. Aye.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Thank you.
At the record show six eyes, no nays, with one absent approval to move this to August tenth council meeting for second reading by title only. Moving on to second reading, there is none, third reading ordinance bill Willow Yucca Street Neighborhood Local Improvement District, LID. Third and final reading. By title only.
Ordinance bill number three for twenty twenty one, ordinance number nine, number one two nine seven. In the matter of water, street, sidewalk, curb, gutter, and storm drain improvements for the Willow Yucca Street Neighborhood, LID, and declaring a need for an expediency clause.
Any questions to councils? Okay, I do have a gentleman here that would like to speak, I will go ahead and throw his testimony in before we make a council directive. And name and address, sir.
Good evening, James Mullane, eighteen zero five Willow Street. Thank you, Mayor and City Council for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you Director Larson for, and your staff for all your hard work on this project. This project is obviously long and this is hopefully a culminating evening. Going to be good for the neighborhood. I just wanted to talk about three quick items in favor of a yes. First of all is about affordability. I've heard lots of, or I've heard some limited testimony about people are, some neighbors are concerned about cost. I think that's real and that is real for them and I value that, that position. I did want to note for this house. You know, there, there are items that we anticipate saving money on. And I wanted to just talk about those things because some people don't recognize that there is some savings to individuals. So first of all, in this house, there are three two hundred and forty volt systems for the electricity. They comprise of the water heater, the dryer, and the well pump. I anticipate without a well pump having to be activated multiple times a day. There'll be, it will for sure have less electricity cost for me. Also, I don't know if you know this, but I pay, and I, and correct me, finance director, if I'm wrong. Appro迫 seventy six dollars a month for sewer to, regardless of how much water I use, I could use zero water or thousands of gallons of water and put it down the sewer pipe, still pay the same amount. And that seventy six dollars is more than I would anticipate paying and I've, I've seen similar water bills. The, the sewer portion of that water bill would be less than I'm paying now. I also believe, although when I see it, I believe my insurance for the home will be less expensive. I mean, a better IS. Fire hydrant, that would be much closer than the one fire hydrant that is serving Yucca, Willow, nineteenth and twentieth in this entire LID. I also appreciate that the donor, I think, I can't remember which councillor spoke about it at last meeting. Donors like to pay our project and I really appreciate the, the efforts there that would also help reduce the overall cost for, for me. And lastly, not paying for porta tanking water every time the well goes dry as well as the damage to the well when I play this game of we can, we can shut the breaker off, allow the water to fill and then turn the breaker back on and, but if we don't catch it in time, we can burn our pump out, right? And we've had to replace our pump before. So again, I do believe there are some savings, it won't be one for one, you know, be very transparent with that. But there'll be savings there. Next thing I want to talk about is accessibility. Have you ever tried to play basketball in gravel as a kid? Have you ever had to roll your scooter in gravel as a kid or an adult, lots of adults try to scooter around? Could you imagine what it would be like to navigate in a wheelchair and gravel? I don't think you, I don't, I think some people don't realize that the mailboxes for this entire neighborhood are at the end of Willow Street. So the mail carrier doesn't come down our neighborhood to deliver mail. We have to get mail, whether that's walking, you know, roll, rollering or driving to get there. And from an accessibility standpoint, it's, it's simply very difficult to do that in a safe and accessible way in gravel. And also, no offense to Public Works Director, please, but I, I, before the meeting, I counted thirty two potholes, some were very small. Some were larger and it's not their fault. That neighborhood has so many cars because it's high density and it's not zoned high density. It just means there are two or three cars per household and there are sixty households, right? So doing the math, it's very challenging for Public Works and they work so hard to try and keep up on that road. Trying to keep the, the potholes eliminated or minimized. And they do a, a, a good job, but again, it's about an accessibility issue for, for us. Lastly, I want to add water. I'm really looking forward to clean, consistent drinking water. Quite frankly, we've had lots of scares over the years with the industrial site nearby. I'm not as worried about that. However, anytime we lose power, no water. Anytime the, the temperature in the summer gets super high, no water. And so I'm really looking forward to consistent quality drinking water. Not worrying about running out of water. Also on the water, we have one hydrant. This is the hydrant. See that hydrant? That hydrant serves this entire neighborhood. One hydrant. And that hydrant is for nearly sixty households and over a hundred structures. And as Counselor Trask and as Mayor Mahler can tell you, it's very difficult to try and drop a tail for fifteen hundred feet when you don't have fifteen hundred feet of five inch hose on your engine. So when, when, you know, fire doubles once, or when fire doubles every one minute and the, and the fire truck has only four minutes of water on its engine. Trying to have consistent water from fire currents that this LID is proposing is, is incredibly important to, to the, to, to the neighborhood. Plus, if they dropped the five inch hose, they would keep driving over it to try and anyways. We've been without basic city infrastructure for forty, fifty years since being annexed into the city. And we've been here before. You know, we've been here multiple times where our neighborhood would told, oh, this is coming, we have a developer that's putting in a golf course, or we have a developer that's doing this or, and we all got excited and then nothing happened. We've been here before, our neighborhood came to you and asking for this, I am a true believer in taxes that the people have the choice in and our neighborhood asked for this. I think we have the right recipe, we have this kind of three-legged stool approach between the city, the donor, and the homeowners that make this project the most stable and the plausible or, or, or realistic or, or have the best, best chance of being successful. These make, make history together. I urge to vote yes on this. I, I definitely appreciate some of the concerns of, of Counselor Sanchez and Counselor Richards. You've made some really good points and all of you at one point or another expressed concern for the affordability of the homeowners and I really do appreciate that. I think that council could direct staff that as they dive into getting bids that they start to actively look at grant funding for this project. And any grant funding that does come in, put it towards the homeowner's portion of the LID instead of the, the city's portion. I think the city's portion is, is, is reasonable, I think it's affordable for the city. But I would recommend that we, that, that council request and ask staff to put any grant funding towards the homeowner's portion of LID. And with that said, I welcome your questions.
Any questions, this gentleman?
Mr. Mayor, just have one question. If the streets are improved, if the LID goes through, would you have a chance of getting your mail delivered? Do you think? I mean, I think, I find that, I didn't realize that, so I find that very.
Yeah, I wish I had brought pictures, it's, it's pretty incredible. I believe in the rural areas, you'll, you'll find mailboxes that are right next to the houses, right, all along. But in side city limits, it's very common for a shared mailbox location for multiple houses in a neighborhood. It's just rare that you find that same situation on gravel roads.
As broke as the US Postal Services, I don't see that can happen. Any other questions, this gentleman?
This whole thing has been a hard one, I've learned a lot and especially after my recent discussions with the mayor and kind of, I'm going to vote for it. So I'm gonna.
Any questions? Thank you, sir, for your testimony. Any other questions of councils? If not, I need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would recommend option to conduct a third and final reading of ordinance bill number three for twenty twenty one at the July twenty seventh. Is that what I need to do? Yeah, city council meeting.
Second.
Most second by roll call, please. For moving forward title. Yeah, my, a roll call for approval.
Yeah, for adoption. I apologize.
What I said.
I'll, I'll own that, that's not the right, that's, that's my fault. For final adoption.
Thank you, Blair.
Motion for final adoption.
I was on vacation.
By Counselor Trask and who was the second for the. Thank you. Sorry.
That's all right.
Okay. Counselor Gerson.
Aye.
Counselor Trask.
Aye.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
No.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just to comment on that, I think that it's, it's been well overdue. And I think that they, they deserve to have good water. I mean, you know, the cost is high, probably, you know, and the cost for the, the folks that are going to have to put in their, their, I hate this word, their fair share, if you want to come to that number. But you, you, it's not a right necessarily, but I think you have, you, you deserve to have that. It just, to me, it makes common sense to, to confuse, to not let you have the water that you can, you have access to. Especially in the consequences that, that has happened in the past. And for, for Mr. Mayor and I, and when you have to lay a thousand feet of five inch hose and you're still five, three feet short, it's frustrating, very frustrating. So I appreciate the council, thanks.
That said, let the record show you have five eyes with one name, one absent approval of the ordinance bill, again, this goes forth for bidding process anyways, so. Thank you very much, moving forward to committees. Anything on the committees to be brought forth?
Oh, sorry. I was not paying any attention, I met with Jamie, Representative Jamie Kate today. Oh, that's right. I met with Representative Kate today and she just reached kind of whenever getting crosswalk pedestrian, you know, lights for all of our flashing crosswalks and I think there were six we added up or something like that it was. And I think that the city needs to do a master plan when it comes to that and I think it would help us get funding for that also. She relayed to me.
In which committees, that could fall under area. Okay, area commissioner of transportation or legislative, both. Anyway. Counselor Sanchez, you want anything to that meeting today, because I know you were present, I think?
I was. I just agree with Counselor Richards. I don't know if it's the legislation committee, but we did have a meeting and to move the city forward with ODOT at a standstill. We would do a lot of good to the community if we presented a plan that was ready to be checked off by ODOT, even though it may or may not be our responsibility, so we can make sure. So we can make sure that we have a shovel ready job when the money becomes available. I think it's really important and that's about all I have to say about that.
Mr. Mayor, am I mistaken? Did, did you guys have the ODOT meeting or is that, you had that today?
Correct.
Well, we had the ODOT meeting yesterday. We had the meeting with Representative Kate and Senator Gerard this morning.
All on the same topic though.
Correct.
And then I went to. And so I guess that's for my little tidbits camera.
Anything else of the, in the committees?
Mr. Mayor, I have. Mr. Mr. I, I want to give the public works kudos again for cleaning up that mess out and back that, that, that Wally messed up. But they did a good job and it's, I appreciate it. They got it done right away and, and so I appreciate it.
One last thing, the chambers, the chamber bank went really well. They had that last week.
Anything else of the committees? Okay. Reports to see the mayor's report, I have to agree with councillor Richards. I thought the chamber awards banquet went well. I thought there was some really good recipients this year and I thought it went pretty good. Thank you, Legia, for all your efforts. City manager's report.
First, I need to thank staff and council. We're all aware I was out of town all of last week on vacation, celebrating my 25th wedding anniversary. Ironically, I, I've married somebody who puts up with me and is understanding of what I do for a living. Because while we, she surprised me with a trip to Walla Walla to do some wine tasting. And while we were there, I talked her into touring their homeless facility for two hours. Still married. Yep. Still got the ring. So I had no idea where we were going. Yeah. And she did a really good job of throwing me off kilter by like, hey, we should pack golf clubs, something, you know, Corta Lane or Bend or nope. She took me to Walla Walla. It was a great time. There was some really good wine. It was like 150 wineries in and around Walla Walla. But that being said, we have a group of people, a subcommittee of the, of the health committee that's working really, really hard in trying to address a very, very wicked issue that is not just a sweet home issue. It is a national issue. And dare I say, Walla Walla may have a template. I'm not going to call it an answer, but they have a template that was very, very impressive. I would, I spoke with the mayor today a little bit about what we saw and experienced while we were there. I would actually like to commission a field trip to visit the facility. The mayor has agreed to attend. I would assume councillor Gorley as chair of the health committee would attend. We'd probably ask for one other councillor to attend, just to avoid a quorum. We'd cut it off at three. A couple of members of the committee, Chief Lynn, Sean, our community services officer, probably a member or two of the chamber of commerce or of the community at large as well. So everyone can see exactly what's going on there. It was impressive and they've, they've done a really good job. Last year in the midst of COVID, they were still able to place 48 homeless people into housing, permanent housing of some point, of some type. So they've done a great job of finding that balance between enabling and empowering. They, they, they don't put up with people not trying to better themselves to that degree. So it was very impressive. So with your permission, I'd like to, to put that together. I would assume councillor Gorley would be interested in attending. So around her schedule, yes. If there's another councillor who would like to attend, you're more than welcome. I'll let you guys bow shampoo over who gets to go or wants to go. If you want to let me know. Well, I'll reach out to a few other people. The other thing about Walla Walla is they have a beautiful vibrant downtown core area. And there are some things there that I thought would be very interesting for us to look at that we could emulate that I think would potentially not only solve the, the, well, would help us with the issue of making our downtown a more vibrant area that people want to spend time in, but also potentially help solve our speeding issue on Main Street. So I, I think it would be a trip well worth it.
I'll let Dave go.
Okay. I said we could flip a coin or draw straws or whatever. Yeah. The other thing, we did meet yesterday with our regional solutions team. If you aren't familiar with regional solutions, essentially the state of Oregon, the governor's office in this, within the state of Oregon, puts together representatives in different regions from all of the state departments. So when you have an issue, a question, you don't know the answer, the regional solutions team lead from the governor's office pulls this people together from ODOT, from DEQ, from other agencies to come in business Oregon, and they will come meet with you to help you solve your problem. We met with, with the governor's lead and as well as representative from ODOT on Monday. What we learned is we're certainly not the only community struggling with these issues that we have. And they were very open to trying to help us. They also suggested a new traffic plan, which as councillor Richards pointed out, was kind of the feedback we got today as well from, from the senator and representative Kate. So how we do that, I don't know. The ODOT representative was going to try and put some pieces together for us, get back to us and help us map out that plan. That being said, it's summer and he's going on vacation. So it'll be a couple of weeks before we hear back from him. But we are trying to work towards some type of an answer. So want to make sure council was aware of that and the community was aware of that. So other than that, thank you for the time off. My wife appreciates it. My wife is actually really into the whole tour. She actually, she was asking a ton of questions. So don't let her fool you when she says, oh yeah, we had to stop by.
Anniversary.
It was not on the anniversary.
But still, still.
It was not on the actual, not on the actual anniversary date.
I'm pretty sure on my anniversary would not be a homeless facility. I will be homeless.
As I said, I'm fortunate enough to marry a very special lady who puts up with me and, and, and my shenanigans. So. Yes, absolutely. Yes. So there is someone for everyone out there.
But to add to your point, Mr. Towery, I've read articles and seen photographs and I know Walla Walla has been a role, a role or a model for Salem and a couple of our communities here in Oregon for the homeless shelter situation. So it might be worth taking a look at that. And I agree, we need to, there's been a couple of actually cities in, in Washington. I was trying to think the one of, of, when Archie has done the same thing.
Modeling after Walla Walla.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So thanks, Ray.
Yeah.
Department of Directors reports, anything for the directors? Or any directors want to bring anything up?
You want to go over your charts? Your charts are in the presentation. So weird, Diane.
So speaking of the homeless, what's happening with Danbury Weekend with the homeless? Do we know?
Can you specify a little closer?
Well, I heard, I don't know, that sprinklers were put in the parking lot to keep them out of the parking lot by the library. But, and they're not in, obviously not camping in Stanky Park right now because they can't get in there. So I'm just wondering where we.
I don't, and I'll have to defer to some, I don't know if sprinklers have been actually put in the park. I know there are in the parking lot, there are sprinkler system that does come on at different periods of time. There, there is irrigation around.
Been stepped up in order to keep them out of the parking lot for the.
It was turned on. It was turned to water because everything was getting dry. We put mulch in there and all we're trying to do is save the vegetation that's in there.
Okay. So we're not looking, okay. So, so again, to my question, do we know, I mean, do you have any?
Currently, we really have no spot that we designate for them. We encourage them or have been encouraging those suffering from homelessness to spend the nights in the parking lot at, in front of the old city hall and the library. We're by no means forcing them into anywhere. And so when we receive complaints that they're on particular businesses that, or private property that we will make contact and encourage them and we direct them to that parking lot. But again, by no means forcing them there. We're also active in the, our business watch program. So officers may be throughout the night, locate them on a, a business private property that's, that's within that business watch program and encourage them again to that, that parking lot.
Thank you.
So what you're saying is we are not forcing out water hoses?
We are not forcing anyone out with water hoses.
Um, one quick thing that I did was drive by the annex and I noticed a hole in the wall in the annex building. Are we addressing, maintaining this annex a little bit or what's the deal with the annex?
I'm unaware of the hole. So it.
Well, it's the annex where the city council chambers was. The building behind, but I know the side wall, there's a hole there now. It's like almost somebody can even crawl underneath it.
Oh, is that into the crawl space?
There's a hole in the wall.
If it's low to the ground, it was actually for some time, we had people looking at it and when we were looking to move it to Detroit, there were some people who got under there and that probably just didn't get put back in. If it's the same thing that I'm thinking of, if not, we'll check it out though.
Yeah, you've got my curiosity feed. We'll go take, I'll go take a look at it.
Uh, Greg, how can I get like, can I go into the old city hall? Just since I've never been in there. Or who do I, who do I ask for that?
You have to go to the fire department.
Yeah. So the fire department has control on senior. I'm, I'm sure Chief Behringer would be happy to give you to her.
So I have one more question. Blair, I have a question for you. So on the business ordinance, the stick that we've decided to, on, for the code enforcement for the businesses.
Are you talking about the vacant building, the vacant building ordinance?
How, how, how are we progressing on that?
It is one of the tools in our code compliance officer's tool chest. It, it is one that, I haven't spoken with him specifically about that recently. But the last time I did, there were a number of, of properties that he had had registration successfully. And he was working through them. I will verify with him though. I, I believe we still have at least a couple of holdouts that have not registered their vacant buildings.
So the registration is working then?
Yes, we, we, we have collected some. I don't think we have all. But, and we have been able to respond to any complaints about those businesses as well. Are those not businesses? Cause there aren't, there's nobody there, but those vacant properties.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chief, is that new captain working out?
He's fantastic.
Is he?
Yes. He's just, he'll make a world of difference in our community.
I counsel business good of order. Just, well, one, one quick note. I talked to Commissioner Springer. It looks like we're going to either this week or next week. We're going to get a decision regarding the mill property about the sale of four applicants that came forth. And we'll find out one of the fours is going to get it. So I met her and we had some discussion about the, it's under a point structure. And she's, she was entitled or one in charge of figuring the points up of who's going to be the winner of that property. So we had a nice little discussion regarding that and it should be coming either this week or next week. So just to say heads up on.
Mr. Mayor, I got, I got a question for you personally. Do, do we agree on everything?
Nope.
Do we agree on anything?
Sometimes.
So if we have a beef, how do you handle that?
I will meet with you and say, try to figure out what in your mind.
Okay.
Why do you think, think one way or the other?
We've been friends for a long time and.
Sometimes it comes to a D, agree to disagree.
Yeah. The thing for me is that you have a right to be wrong.
That's true. So do you.
Have a good night, folks.
Well, I just thought maybe you're going to volunteer to, to practice and make sure our taser's work. And that's, you know.
I use a taser on.
We can make that happen.
Thank you, chief. Make sure you turn up the, you gotta turn it up a little bit.
Anyway, thank God. Nothing further. I will adjourn at seven.